The Republicans to the right, the United States of America, to the Republic of America, for its standards, when nation, under God, indivisible, and liberating justice for all.
These remain standing in the moment of prayer for all those suffering around the world, and an extra prayer for those protecting us every day. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Secor-Lavigne?
Yes.
Do I have a question to the correspondent to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Council President Secor-Lavigne, please. Do I have a question to the office of the Department of State Department of State Department for further action?
Thank you. We have no public hearings, so I have no comments tonight. Orders for discussion on second reading, one in order to amend or supplement the advice, general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 15, Buildings and Construction, Chapter 15.04 Uniform Construction, Section 15.04160, Demolition Notice Required, Release, Section I'm now prepared to open this up to the public comment. If you'd like to speak, please step forward to the microphone. You have five minutes. Seeing none.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Secor-Lavigne?
Yes.
Two has been called first reading. We got nothing.
Council President, for malic purposes, we need a motion to hold it as it is in order in the second reading.
Can I have a motion to hold it, President?
Okay.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Secor-Lavigne?
Yes.
We have nothing on first reading. We now have resolutions one through thirty. I'll open it up to the public. You have five minutes to speak, one time only.
Good evening, Council President Charlie Cradiville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I wanted to ask about, on page five, number twenty-two, is a resolution referring some properties, referring a redevelopment plan for two properties to the planning board. Can I understand what motivated this, what the purpose of the resolution is?
This is motivated, this is, they are older buildings, and as you know, this is the Christ Church Sexton House and the Dutch Reformed Church, there's an office building there, and they want to be able to convert those into affordable housing, and this will, they are otherwise a non-conforming use, and this will allow them to do that with all of the other processes they were having to defer.
Okay, so, just to be clear, the current owners, the church, are supportive of this?
Yes.
Thank you. I think that's all I had on the resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm asking the public to listen to speak on the resolutions only. Please step forward.
Hi, good evening. My name is Linda Stork. I'm curious what a $225,000 outreach vehicle is, the least required.
That is a vehicle that is replacing a vehicle from 1996. It's a vehicle that's used for mobile outreach, for a mobile command center, for community activities. The other vehicle has passed its useful life, is no longer economically feasible to do any repairs on it, and this does, is what that are doing.
Okay, does it upgrade, does it exist even at all? Does it do anything extra?
It does everything we need it to do. It's obviously an upgrade from a vehicle that's 28 years old, and it does have the technology in it for radio communication, and for, like I said, to be a mobile command center, as well as a generator.
And a generator. So it could be deployed in event of a power outage to provide?
Absolutely. It could be, it would be the vehicle that is used for an emergency situation, such as when you have hurricanes or floods, and something that they can set up a command post with, and it could utilize in that part.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Does anyone else in the public have any comment on the resolutions? Seeing none?
Do the business.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes.
Council President Secor-Lavigne?
Yes.
I do want to remind everybody that National Night Out is on the second, and so it's very time in the community to get out to interact with the police department and the fire department alike, there are community activities that go on throughout the city that night, so it's something that you might want to gather the information off of our website, and, and, and. Do I have another council member, I'm sorry, do you see that, Councilwoman Escobar?
Yes. Yes, I'm just wondering, I'd like, the team control, your control, I have a pressure of either you thought, but still, but I was using training to use them yesterday, we were able to do ninety blocks here in New Brunswick, and they picked up over two hundred seventy-five pounds of garbage, and over thirty-five pounds of recycled materials. The first week, and I think this is very impressive, you know, that young people are out there, the first week that the program started, they did, the first week, they picked up nine hundred and fifty pounds of trash, and two hundred and seventy pounds of recycling, and then the second week, they picked up thirteen hundred pounds of trash, and two hundred and ninety pounds of recycle. Like I said, I spent time with them in home groups, along the way, it was very encouraging for the kids, for the kids, for the kids, and for myself, as a resident, so by yourself and the community, to see how many community members came up to me, to say they're how great that the program is going, they love seeing the kids being out there, being active in the community, and taking ownership. So, again, congratulations, let's keep it up, and I hope that will help to, you know, to work with the kids in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Anderson, do you have anything to say then? Councilman Egan, do you have any comments to say then?
I also would like to applaud, I was looking at this when I first got here, and I think that's amazing, all the garbage they picked up, and hopefully, if they keep working, we can get this number lower. I applaud anybody that's doing that type of work, thank you very much.
Councilman Fleming, do you have any comments you'd like to make to say then? Before we move into the public comment portion, and it is a public comment portion on session answer session, I just want to remind everybody that we're here to conduct the business of the city by virtue of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 104-6. That business must be conducted in a public forum, however, there are certain exceptions, one being cited in NJSA 104-12, and referred to collective bargaining agreement, or the terms and conditions which are proposed for inclusion in any collective bargaining agreement, including the negotiation of terms and conditions thereof with employees or representative of employees in a public body. That is not something that we conduct in a public forum, it is one of the exceptions to the Open Public Meeting Act. That being said, you're allowed to make your comments, but that is why we cannot respond to anything relative to those comments. I'll now open up the floor for public comment. I can have the first speaker. You have five minutes.
Harry D. Coates, Livingston Avenue. Of course, I work for DPW, New Brunswick. I've been here before, and I'm back again, of course. With everything that's been going on, I had to come down here again to support my shop steward, and speak again on the things that has been going on, the things that we've been dealing with. We're still waiting for our hazard pay, because we're out there doing COVID, day in and day out, every day, and as the other towns have gotten their hazard pay, we haven't gotten our hazard pay yet, but we earned it, we worked for it, we want it. When you want something, you work for it, that's the saying, right? So we worked for it, we want it, we haven't gotten it, we haven't heard a thing about it, and outside of that, as far as I'm concerned, there's only excuses, and we deserve it because we worked for it and we earned it, and we worked harder than any other town around here, hands down, without a shadow of a doubt. Second of all, on top of that, I would like to also speak on the fact that, because of the things that's been going on, a lot of problems been happening down at the yard, with unsafe equipment still, behind the scenes, whatever negotiations you all have going on, and talk about behind the scenes, I don't know, at the end of the day, it hasn't made an impact, it hasn't made a change with anything, as far as I'm concerned, it's just, I've been a lot of talk, because I like to see action, just like you expect us to get out there and do our job, day in and day out, weekend and weekend out, compared to the other towns, which we have been actually meeting with and talking to, you know, from East Brunswick to North Brunswick, to Edison, to Sayerville, to Plainfield, they are compensated much better than we are, and they pick up one-third of the sanitation, ball pickups, scrap, whatever, in total, if you just say your garbage alone, they pick up one-third of what we pick up. We ask them, what is your load like on an average day? And on an average day, they tell us anywhere from eight to fifteen tons. Now ask us what we pick up on a daily basis. On a Monday and Tuesday, which is our heaviest days of the week, and I work on the biggest route, so I'm telling you what we pick up, and as well as the other trucks. Monday, we picked up about thirty-five tons of garbage. Thirty-five tons, that's more than double what the surrounding towns pick up. Tuesday, we picked up about thirty-five tons of garbage, if not a little bit more. I see the dump slips, because I own a truck, I go to the dump, to dump the truck. And we're not compensated for it. We told the supervisor in Sayerville, and the director that we pick up thirty-five tons of garbage on an average day, twenty tons on, twenty-five tons, twenty to twenty-five tons on a Thursday and Friday, sometimes thirties, and on Monday and Tuesday, we pick up over thirty tons of garbage. If we have a double day, we pick up over forty tons of garbage, upwards of fifty tons of garbage. We go to the dump two and three times a day, which we did on Monday and Tuesday, and still have garbage in the truck for the following day. And he couldn't believe in his response to us, this, that's impossible. You know why he said this is impossible? Because there's only two guys in the back of the truck with the driver throwing all of that garbage. And their guys, they don't pick up near what we pick up. Second of all, just recently, when we, when a lot of people were out of work on vacation, et cetera, they had to bring in children, I was here, because see, I came in because I like to know what's going on. So even though others were off, I was here on that Monday and Tuesday after the holiday, and they had children on my truck, fifteen and sixteen years old, on my truck with me, with me showing them how to throw garbage, and how to work the handles on the back of the truck. One of the children almost fell off of my truck, because they should not be on the back of a garbage truck, driving down the street at thirty-five and forty miles an hour. I wonder if their parents knew that they were on the back of garbage trucks for a whole day, burnt out, I had to give the children money to go and buy them drinks and food to eat? Did their parents even know that they were on the back of garbage trucks throwing garbage all day, sweating and burning up out there? No, I doubt their parents knew they were on the back of garbage trucks, hanging on garbage truck going forty miles an hour, thirty-five miles an hour. And it's just unacceptable, and the reason being is because the right thing is not being done, the pay is not being given, and the other towns, we ask how much you make, oh, our back guys make thirty-one dollars an hour, oh, our drivers make thirty-four dollars an hour, and another town, oh, our back guys, they started with, you know, twenty-three dollars an hour, oh, our drivers are starting with fifty-two thousand dollars an hour, and so on and so forth, from town to town, including Plainfield. So, it's just not right, and they knew one-third of what we do, and we're still getting hammered out here, day in and day out, and we're not being respected or appreciated for it, and there's always excuses. Correct it, tired of it.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Joseph Dees, I'm from Public Works. I have questions, and I really don't understand, you know, this whole situation. To me, A plus A equals B. That's the way I see it. As my coworker said, these, this garbage, this sanitation, this whole thing, has been There's a, I got, if you've got some information, that now that the town, now that the city is recognized, because of things that are being exposed, there's a situation that's going on with the dump on Jersey Avenue, whereas the papers are being doctored. We go in there with eighteen tons, we come out, oh, it's ten. Mind you, we take a picture of the scale that's in front of us when we go in, we come out, and go back on that scale, totally different, ten tons, eight tons, which is crap, because we're out there every day, we know the difference, we read the math, we're not stupid. So somewhere down the line, someone is covering up something. In order to cover your butts, you're covering up something, to make us look like what we're saying is a lie.
Can I interrupt you for a question? Are you talking about the scale at the yard, or Public Works yard, or the scale that's out over by the double capacity?
The scale by double battery, okay? We have paper, we have the receipts, is that right? We have the receipts, okay? When we go in, and when we come out. We also have cell phones, okay? So someone's trying to cover themselves. Things are being happening in this town, and it's allowed. Some towns are restricted, some towns in Brunswick is not. That's not cool. Some towns in Brunswick is not restricted, whatever goes, goes. What would you want us to do? Do double days, extreme days? You want this stuff picked up. I bet you none of you would do it. We had the Parks Division come up and do it. They couldn't handle it. They stopped half-day because it was that much. Now just imagine the ones who do it every single day, and they couldn't handle it. So why would you put this on us, like something's wrong with us? It's not fair, it's not right, it's not right. Something needs to be done. And I was told that we don't deserve hazard pay. It was told to us that whatever I decide to do with the grant that is given, the money that is given, is what we decide to do. That's what we were told. How would you feel if that's someone that told you that? I don't have to give you no money, I don't have to give you what's due to you, I can do what I want with it, even if they owe you. Y'all wouldn't like it. Y'all wouldn't like it at all. So I don't see why it's such an issue when we come down to express what we think and what we feel, and then we're being harassed because we do.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Do you want to have the next speaker?
That's what you do?
This is public comment portion, and I just did cite part of the law that we do not speak about collective bargaining issues, the council is not party to those contracts, we get them after for approval, once an negotiation is.
Excuse.
No, that is the process.
Vise, vice.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, I would like to, I will get to all of my enemies soon, but I do have to say, I know I do have a new enemy now, but maybe I'd explain to you, Ms. Aaron.
Excuse me, Mr. Counselors.
Ms. Aaron, due to where, I don't know who you think you are, telling the workers that they're not allowed to be around me, or talk to me, please ask your buddy, Mr. Charlie Cradiville, what happens to evil eyes that, like I said, start spreading things about me? Were you calling workers, telling them?
Please address the camps on this one.
Please, stop interrupting, because like I said, you're gonna have your day. I can, I'm talking, I can look anywhere, but like I said, please tell your buddy, Mr. Charlie Cradiville, tell her due to where what, what evil eyes have their day, what the doctor called will say to you when you saw him the other day. Ooh, this woman put a curse on me. No, I did not. Every evil eye has their day, and like I said, where you keep telling workers they don't belong to me, but I'll get to you another day in something else as well, but I will say my prayers, I try to be, I have a good heart, I try to stay calm, think of, ooh, those words from Wake Up Everybody, ooh, no matter what, race, created color, we need each other, the words from We Are The World, we are all God's great big family, but with all you racist and hatred, you will have your evil eye day, and I will say my prayers, that each and one of you rot in hell.
That's what you're adding for.
Well, good, I will be out of all of that then. Like I said, well, good, whatever, I will say, say, you be one of them, to Susan Secor Loving, Mr. Shamy.
Are you threatening again?
Keep saying that I'm threatening, and every time you say, you say, I'm not threatening you, like I said, the Lord's gonna take you. And like I said, what was I just, you really gotta pull this, like I said, like I said, the Lord's eating your way. I didn't threaten you, and stop saying that I'm threatening you.
You cannot be able to conduct yourself in a professional manner.
I'm not, I stopped interrupting, saying that I'm threatening you, but I was, like I said, this is bull, every time with her, you will rot in hell, Susan Secor Loving, like I said, let the Lord eat your ass away.
Please turn your mic from the room. I have a next speaker, please, please say your name.
Brittany Richardson, Livingston Avenue. Once again, I am with the Department of Public Works, unfortunately, so, once again, we hear you guys keep bringing up the bargaining system, because you don't really have the answers. The bargaining system, we do understand is a contract, we are not illiterate, we know that we are supposed to go to the union to take care of things, so let's be frank, you guys have broken that contract years ago, even before I started working here, you do not follow the contract. So what contract do we follow? You have not given these people the raises that you're supposed to.
They just will have their day.
Make sure that's fact recorded on the record.
You have not followed the raises and things that were going on, in that contract, you do not follow the safety rules, so on, so forth with that contract, that's why we do not feel the need to follow the rules. You guys make the rules, you break the rules, but if we do it, it's not appropriate. So let's talk about this great summer program with these children that you brought up. Okay, so let's talk about how July 4th, we are city workers, we do not work July 4th. So the following two days, workers were using their days to stay home, because it was going to be extremely hot, and you know, we're working on trucks with no air conditioners, some of them have no fans, so a day like today, where it's ninety-nine degree weather, we're out there working with hot trucks, hot garbage, bugs, whatever the case may be, but you don't care, that's neither here nor there, we still have to pick the garbage up, so a lot of people were off of work. For some reason, I'm getting these harassment calls, saying that I'm supposedly doing some sort of strike. Please keep my name out of that, I do not know what's going on, I just know that I wasn't gonna be there, my supervisors and directors have known in advance that I was not gonna be there, not sure what was going on. But what I did see on my off day is children that are not the age of eighteen, they do not have any experience throwing garbage, they did not have the proper safety equipment, probably never even worked the hopper, which is the rear section of the garbage truck, in their lives, on the back of a garbage truck, literally about to fly off, because they don't know how to properly hold on the truck, and you guys are paying them, what, thirteen dollars an hour, to pick up garbage that normally you would pay adults to pick up for more money? Not to mention, it was double the garbage, because the holiday, we don't pick up garbage. But the program is just so great. I don't understand that you use those kids, but you didn't tell their parents, they were out there on a double day picking up that garbage, and we're dealing with feces, we're dealing with urine, we're dealing with hydroc areas, needles in the garbage, and you can only imagine what else in that garbage. Blood, all types of things. Anything that I say, I mean, you know, I have proof, I don't just say anything about just random things, I have proof. So when you guys are going behind my back and saying little things, to ask questions of my coworkers or my superiors, everything comes back to me, and I feel really harassed and discriminated against, and that's fine, because whatever you wanna come at me with, I'm prepared for it, trust me, whatever, it doesn't matter what it is, that is not a threat, it's just I've been preparing for this day, because when I tried to do the bargaining process and follow the chain of command, and try to get you guys to settle these issues behind closed doors, you guys didn't want to do that. You didn't respect what I was saying, it was just like, oh, we'll look into it, and you never looked into it, so I had to take drastic measures for you to see that these things are still to this day going on. Nothing's being done. We were out there today, in hundred-degree weather, with lots of garbage, lots, there's four routes, so if one of these guys are telling you they picked up thirty-five tons, that's only one truck, with two guys on the back and a driver. You guys wouldn't have your kids out there, or your family out there doing that, yeah, we know what we signed up for, but we were just pretty much asking for your help to regulate that garbage, and you do not. You don't have any money to pay us, but we're seeing you hiring new inspectors and hiring these new people.
Buying trucks.
You know what I mean, yeah, that we don't even, like, what is the money going to? I'm not really sure what it is, because these trucks are ancient, the police are riding around in brand-new cars, everybody's riding around these brand-new work cars and vehicles, and I'm not mad with the police, they do their thing, but what I'm saying is, they need the proper equipment, so do we, we work in the same city, why don't we deserve that? Thank you, Christina, for coming, and you're my hero. This is the lady I showed you, that was in a coma for six months, because you didn't care about sanitation getting COVID-19. It was spreading around, and it was still happening, the last meeting that I told you about, she almost lost her life, and she lost her child, just like I lost my child. And like I said, it's either you guys are gonna pay what you're supposed to, so I can go ahead on about my business, and you can keep your job, or I will continue to come down here, however long it takes. I don't care about your bargaining system, you didn't care about our bargaining system, we don't care about yours.
Thank you. I'll have the next speaker, please.
Yeah, I just want to say something real quick. If I don't take eighteen away from my, my mother's current, but I will talk from personal experience, I was with the kids, myself cleaning the streets, those nineteen, and the kids have proper equipment, I'm not talking about what happened.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
I was there, and I had seen they had equipment, I was there, we were there for three hours with our kids doing it, and I think that, in the business of Public Works, I have a program, and this is not something that I understand, I can take away anything from what you're saying, but I just want to clarify, that the kids that I work with, including the Teen Year Patrol, at least yesterday, when I worked with them, we all have the equipment, and the kids would utilize the picks, they have clothes.
No, they would be having garbage.
Our kids, again, I was there, and I was doing it myself.
So was Convalente, and Victor.
What I'm telling you, my experience yesterday, from eleven.
We're not talking about.
But that's what I'm saying, I'm not gonna go back and forth with you, I understand, I respect you, I listen to you, but I'm just trying to figure out, because you mentioned that the kids didn't have equipment, I didn't see that. I spent, I don't take, I'm not saying for the school or not, I'm just saying that my experience was that the kids have equipment, I spoke to the Teen Year Patrol kids, and they were fine, they did say that it's some days they're hot, and they're out there, and I said, well, that's what it takes, it's not an easy job. And parents knew what they were signing for, as far as I know, because the same, I have a different group of kids, that I don't know, and I'm gonna find out, I want to hear about that.
I want to see it.
Again, I just want to find out about what happened, because that does worry me, that there's some kids hanging out in a garbage truck, I want to hear about that, I need that.
All day, I'm here.
But other than that, I just want to give you, to give you that, yesterday, when I worked with the kids, and only twenty additional kids from another program, they all have the right equipment, and I was doing the cleanup with them, so it's not that I was in my car seeing that, I was walking the streets with them, I knew myself, so I just wanted to make sure.
We had about six of them.
Thank you, Council. I'll have the next, you have this.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradiville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today, candidate for mayor of New Brunswick. I want to thank the council for Resolution 072248, approving a street closure. With your support, we're bringing National Night Out back to Townsend Street, and wanted to say that all are welcome, we want everybody in the community to feel welcome and to join us for a nice block party, we hope the city council will join us if your schedule allows. I also want to say that I stand with the city workers, and I think that everybody who makes this city run deserves to be treated with respect, and, you know, ultimately deserves fair compensation for their work. I know the mayor is on the record supporting fifteen-dollar minimum wage, but apparently not. but apparently not practicing what he preaches because not everybody on the city payroll is being paid that at this time. And, uh, you know, I certainly think that anybody who's doing the essential work, uh, as the DPW folks are, does deserve hazard pay. Um, this, you know, past two plus years has been horrendous and really risky for, uh, public workers who we depend on to, uh, keep the city safe and clean. And I think that, um, you know, there's disparate treatment between certain departments. Uh, you know, getting compensated and, uh, I think that needs to be addressed. And I do wanna note that there's nothing stopping me from addressing it in these meetings. Uh, yes, if you choose to have a closed session to discuss personnel matters, that's your right. But you can also, uh, you know, should you choose, respond to questions or, uh, comments that are made at this microphone. And I would venture to say it would be the right thing to do, to respond and give your thoughts. Um, you know, some of the things that have been brought up here have merited an investigation. The city's hired an attorney to look into some of these claims and I think that, you know, the, the, the public deserves answers. So I hope that you can share with us at a future meeting what this investigation has found and what you're going to do in response to it. I do wanna, uh, speak about the mayor. Um, I know that we have a lot of problems in this city, including the increasing unaffordability for residents to stay here and a really severe uptick in violent crime. I'll note that the mayor has not held a press conference since 2011, more than a decade. He has not attended a city council meeting since 2012, just over a decade. He has not given a state of the city address since 2019. And so last night, I took a trip to see the mayor at his other job, uh, where he works as the redevelopment attorney for Milltown. And tried to ask him why people need to come to Milltown to speak to the mayor of New Brunswick. And as you could imagine, it didn't go very well. But I wanna, uh, you know, I wanna establish that, you know, the mayor works for us. We are the public and we deserve answers from all of our elected officials. And we deserve access to all of our elected officials. So maybe the mayor doesn't like my questions, maybe he doesn't like that I have gotten involved in politics. But he still works for me and every other one of the fifty-five thousand residents of this city. And his attitude last night was really problematic. He told me he will never talk to me. And I don't think that's the way any elected official should behave. I will say that his reason for not talking to me was that he said, "My facts are wrong." Rather than pointing out any facts or setting me straight and telling me what I got wrong and, and, you know, what the true story is, he just said, "I'm never gonna talk to you because your facts are wrong." And I, I know I brought this up before we started the New Brunswick Today newspaper to enlighten the community, educate the community, and share important stories, like the stories that get told on this microphone and the stories that you have to share as well. And I have in the past, you know, gotten that kind of criticism, like, "You're wrong, your stories are wrong, your facts are wrong." But I always have to push back and say, "Well, what specifically is wrong?" Because if we got something wrong, we wanna, we wanna correct it. We wanna get the truth out there. So I will give all of you an opportunity right now. If there's anything we've ever gotten wrong, or any facts that I've gotten wrong on this microphone or, or in speaking to you, uh, in person or on the phone or anything like that, if there's ever anything that I got wrong, I'd like you to tell me. And I'd also encourage the mayor to tell me what he thinks we got wrong. I know I've brought this up before, Mr. Egan was the council president and he said, uh, we spelled his name wrong one time. And it's true and he corrected it very quickly. But was there anything substantive we've ever got wrong? Is there anything we need to correct?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Cradaville. Does any other member of the public wish to speak? It's one time on the microphone.
Was one time a month?
Does any other member of the public wish to speak?
Good evening again. I'm still Linda Stork. I'm gonna start by saying that I think it's a travesty what's happening with the Department of Public Works. Adding on to the travesty of what's happening with affordable housing in this town. And, uh, it's just, it kinda boggles the mind, actually. You know, that they would be sending- Well, I don't even wanna go to the kids. And, yeah, I would imagine they wouldn't have kids hanging off the trucks with council members present, but apparently this is what went on.
I wasn't a person yet, that's what-
No, no, I know. I understand that. Because of course not. Um, you know, this was a different time, this was a different event.
And I wasn't gonna say councilperson. I was saying, I'm a representative of the council, just to-
Exactly, but everybody knows who you are. They aren't gonna do questionable things in front of you if they can help it. But that's, that's bad, because if I, if I knew my kid was going out to pick up garbage, I would say, "Great." But if I found out he was hanging off the back of a truck without proper equipment and proper training? Oh, no.
Awesome.
That's the kind of stuff, um, young boys go out and do, and making their mothers lose sleep. That's the kind of stuff they go out and do on their own. Bad enough. Hanging off cars and stupid stuff like that. No, absolutely not. So, and it's all well and good to have volunteers in general, you know, taking, you know, caring about their city and pitching in. You know, I've, I've been, um, trying to help out at Buchanan Park, but at the same time, I'm not going to do things that are the job of, uh, the park workers, that they're short-staffed. And so there's a lot not getting done, the parks are dirty. And I can't believe they sent the parks people over to back up DPW. It's not like the parks are done. Look around Buchanan Park. Oh my God, the bathrooms aren't even open. And there's garbage everywhere. I've gone a couple times when PlaySafe was getting ready to start and garbage. One time I saw the garbage that I had brought some kids over there to play on the previous Friday and I saw the same litter all around the picnic table where we had put our stuff on Friday. And I, that's why I noticed what kind of garbage was around there. And that same garbage was there the next week by the pavilion there. But PlaySafe is. And the, and the little, uh, portage on that, all those kids in PlaySafe have to use now. So it's not like they have enough and they said, you know, so they, they can't get their own thing. Instead, why don't we just get enough people? Yes, you would have to pay more. You know, obviously, but everybody deserves more. And to, and to, and to talk about the hazard pay in conjunction with travel, with contract negotiations which are private and can't be discussed in public, but that hazard pay from COVID? No, that's, that's not. They shouldn't have to litigate that in their contract. That's something they should already have. Because they already did that work and it was extra money that came in for COVID at the discretion of the city to distribute. And for the attitude to be, "Well, we don't have to give it to you." I just, I just can't even imagine with the job they do, the work they do, and the lack of respect that they get. And, and, uh, and then to be sending people from one department that's already understaffed and not getting their own work done over to try and, and, and the kids, it's just... And I originally had wanted to say something about the, the lack of affordable housing. So, the seven hundred and something units, biggest housing development in what? New Brunswick history? I don't even know. Gets approved, third try, second try in a week. Gets, gets approved with zero affordable housing. We're not talking low income. Zero affordable, a hundred percent, let's put it like this. If it's zero affordable, then obviously it's a hundred percent unaffordable housing. With the shortage and the need that we have in this community for affordable housing, how can that even be? And, and, and when, and when can the units that they may be payment for be expected to show up and where?
Thank you for your comments, councilor. Does any other member of the public wish to speak?
Yes, I have a question. Based on what you just told me. Okay? You said only one question, one time, you're supposed to then give your presentation.
Not, not question, it's one time on the microphone.
Okay, now, I was here three times before. And each time-
I was, I was saying-
Oh, each time, I saw the same people getting up, presenting their case.
And I will, I will-
I'm not, I'm not done.
Okay.
I'm not done. I saw three people get up and give their, what they feel on different occasions, different times, same people.
Absolutely.
Okay? But you're telling me that I can't say anything right now.
No, I said, they, they, there are-
Why is that?
Because there are different pieces of the meeting.
No, it was the same.
You're allowed to?
It was the same.
Never, you're allowed to.
No, 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 miss.
You're allowed to.
You are very informed, not, not informed.
I would like to-
You are very not informed, you're not informed. No, no, miss, miss, I've seen it. I watched it.
I would like to see it too because no one-
I've seen it, I watched it.
In any section of the-
And for you to say to me that I can't say anything, something's wrong with that.
That's not what I said.
Something's really wrong with that.
There are three portions of the-
It was, it was allowed.
Excuse me.
It's allowed.
Excuse me, you're talking-
Anybody, anyone is allowed to say anything they feel like they wanna say, but you're gonna shut me down.
That's not what happened here, sir.
That's exactly what happened.
No, it is not. And I'm trying to-
That's exactly what happened.
You're not listening.
One time, you told me one time.
Absolutely, and every, in any one portion of the meeting-
It doesn't go for anyone else.
It doesn't.
One time.
It applies to everyone.
That's what you said to me, one time.
One time during the public comment, absolutely.
It's noted.
Yeah, it should be noted, that's for sure.
It's noted. One time, you said one time.
It should be noted.
Now watch, be prepared that it's gonna happen again. And when it happens again, you're gonna see.
And I'm gonna-
And I'll remind you.
Okay, you can remind you, but I just wanna be very clear, there are certain, there are three different portions of the meeting where people can come up and speak at all three portions of the meeting for five minutes each time during. You have the opportunity to speak on ordinances. You can come up and speak once for one time only on ordinances, on second reading. You can come up and you can speak again on the resolutions, one time for five minutes only. And then you have the opportunity again to come up during the public comment portion to speak for one time, five minutes only.
When did you decide it? Okay, I would just like to say what I think. If there's more than one ordinance, you can speak on every-
You can speak on each, on each ordinance. This has been the process for barring a difference in time. It has been the process for as long as I know.
Seventies.
Since the nineteen seventies.
Yeah, we, we, we apologize. It's just a lot to try to tell you that's what's going on. In just five minutes, especially when you've been to other meetings where we've watched you let, for example, the lawyer with the DeGala bar, he talked for almost an hour with no interruptions, repeating himself, which is on record. And you didn't say anything. But I understand that may have been a different situation, but it is a lot to try to rush and-
And I, and I understand, I understand that too, but in that instance, when the attorney was here, it was a public hearing. And that's the difference in that, we're not trying to play games with the time that we give everybody. These are, these are processes that we've had in place for forever. I mean, like, Mr. Shamy says, since the seventies. So we're not, this is not something we're changing tonight. Something we've, we've always done, like I said, barring the exception of the amount of time. At one point, I think it was three minutes sometimes. There was no time limit, sometimes announced a five-minute limit. But that is why you see people come up to the microphone. The same person may come up three or four times during a meeting, depending on how many ordinances we have. Then again, to speak on the resolutions, and then again, to come up for public comment. So that is how it is. So yes, you will start to see people come up numerous times, but not more than once in any given portion of it. And I just wanted to explain that. Now I'll have the next speaker, please.
We're trying to keep our sanity and you ought to push us very fast.
Is there another speaker for any more public comment?
Please don't push us to that page.
Saying no.
Boo Boo Jurn, second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar. Council President Cora.